Ramona Becker?
Here.
Guy McDonald?
Here.
Betty Martin?
Here.
Peggy O'Donnell?
Here.
Diane Nguyen?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Wonderful. All meetings, we'll go ahead and start tonight's off with our moment of silent prayer. Amen. If you'll now please rise and join us in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty, I want to welcome everybody to your final regularly scheduled meeting of your Bel Air City Council for calendar year 2015. I remarked with some of the council members earlier that this has probably been the fastest 12 months in my life for all kinds of reasons, and I don't understand it, but here we are. And we're moving forward with that. The first item before council tonight is the consent agenda, which consists only of the minutes of the December 1 council meeting. There's a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
We have a first and second. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Consent agenda passes. The next item is the appropriations, which I think everyone may have noticed that the appropriations are pretty doggone high. I don't know that we've ever seen one this high before, $4.5 million nearly. That's because three temp notes from 2013 were paid off by the issuance of the GO bonds that we talked about approved last month, so that's the main reasoning behind that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McDonald?
Make a motion to approve appropriations ordinance 15-24.
Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, sign. City requests appearances, I have none for me. It's now time for citizens concerned, if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to address council, now is the time to do that. Is there anyone in chambers wishing to address council? Seeing none, we'll move into reports. I have no formal report other than to say just a couple of things. One, I wanted to thank the Community Development Committee for the Christmas Open House that wrapped up just about four minutes ago, and for Santa Claus and the Lions Club for always being there, and just great, lots of cookies. So if you see some of us up here, it's because we had our cookies, but I wanted to thank the committee for doing that, and is that Santa coming into our meetings? Oh, my goodness.
Oh!
Look at this. What a treat, what a treat. What a treat, okay. We were just talking about you two.
Thank you, Santa. I've been a good girl.
Two candy canes, alright.
Thank you, Santa. This is awesome.
Thank you, Santa.
Thank you.
I love it.
Did you want to tell Santa you wanted snow for Christmas?
Santa, we would like, since we're too big, all of us are sitting on your lap, we do request snow on Christmas Eve, it's been a long time. If you could make that happen, so.
Thank you, Santa.
He's not, Merry Christmas, thank you, Santa Claus. Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, thank you, thank you. Then the other two items that I wanted to bring up, I don't know if everyone has seen our latest issue of the Kansas Government Journal, which we get every year, or every year, every month, and there's just what I thought was a great article by Michael Koss on setting goals for your city, and would encourage all council members and also the public. I think this, maybe our January workshop, it'd be really good to sit down and talk about the goals and priorities that we want to tackle for 2016. And again, it's in the journal, which I think everyone received that, on page, it says 298, although there's not 298 pages in it, but it's there. But yeah, it's just a one-page article, and he's the Assistant City Attorney for Overland Park, but had that article about kind of setting priorities and goals, and like I said, would invite the public too, if they'd like to come to that workshop in January. And we'll see if we can maybe get some representatives from some of the different groups. I just thought that might be kind of neat as we go into the new year for that. And then finally, the only thing, just want to wish everybody a very, very, very merry and safe Christmas, and a happy and blessed New Year, and I hope everyone enjoys the holiday season. With that, we'll move on to council reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Becker.
Well, I don't have much to report tonight except to echo your thanks to the committee for the very nice reception tonight for Santa Claus' visit to our city. And I'd also like to give credit to Jackie O'Neill, who did all the beautiful decorations. She did just a beautiful job on it. Also enjoyed attending the staff luncheon on Wednesday of last week, that was very nice, and I was glad to be able to be there and share with so many of our employees. And beyond that, just wish everybody very wonderful, happy, safe holidays. Thank you.
Ray McDonald?
Wish everybody a happy holiday season, and I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
So, Don?
I just want to echo what you said about the open house we had just now, it was wonderful, and thank everybody for their hard work, and wish everybody a wonderful Christmas and New Year, and it's good to be back. I was on the other side of the pond, and was at my son-in-law's, got his doctorate in Nottingham, so it's good to be back home and here tonight, thanks.
Wonderful. Councilmember Nguyen?
I have very little to report, because I also took a week's vacation, leaving Thanksgiving Day, and just coming back. There is an upcoming event that I think is very worthwhile, that is an appreciation breakfast for people who have volunteered or are volunteering on a regular basis, and I will be attending that this week.
Councilmember Martin?
On December the 4th, I had the privilege of taking a bus trip with the senior club. They went to Bartlesville, to the Frank Phillips' house, Moore Home, had 27 rooms, and we got to tour through all of those. It was a beautiful, beautiful house, and the landscaping and everything was really nice. Then we stopped and had lunch at the Sterling House, and the food was very good, and then we went to the ranch of Frank Phillips. And Frank Phillips was the gentleman that made all of his millions in gas and oil in Oklahoma. So if anybody could go to those two museums and have lunch, spend the day, it's really worthwhile going through it, and we got to hear all of his history. After he passed away, his wife, Jane Phillips, dedicated and built a Jane Phillips Hospital. Maybe her name was Jen, I'm not sure, there in Bartlesville, because they didn't have a hospital. We did drive by it, but that was about that. On December the 9th, I attended the staff luncheon, it was great, and I'd like to thank all the staff and Tristan for all of their hard work putting that together. I did attend the Christmas Open House tonight, which was very good again, and the food or the hors d'oeuvres was fabulous, a lot of people came, hopefully next year we'll have more. Last night, I attended the senior dinner at the Candle Club, and they had a musician, and the food there was very, very good. That's all I have in there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to echo Councilwoman Mark Martin's report about Bartlesville. My wife and I made that trip about 30 years ago, and it is an amazing place, the house and the ranch that he has in the museum, and I would encourage anyone from this area who has not gone to Bartlesville and gone through the house and gone through the museum, it would be a worthwhile trip for anyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Fun day trip, okay. With that, we'll move to City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, just a couple items. It was pretty widely publicated that the Wichita, City of Wichita is raising their water rates for their citizens, but it also includes their wholesale customers, which Bel Air is a wholesale customer of the City of Wichita. Now, we only get about 50% of our water from them, the rest of it comes from CCU-A. But it said that they were raising about 5.6% for next year, and so we'll just kind of have to watch the water fund and see how, if we can absorb that into our rates without increasing water rates for our citizens. But it does impact the city as well, since we do purchase some of our water through Wichita. Just a reminder that we have the workshop scheduled for next Thursday at 6:00 PM after the CCU-A meeting, so be here. And then, just to let the public know, if they didn't catch the last council meeting, that city offices will be closed next Thursday and Friday for Christmas, so that's all I have, Mayor.
Did he say 6:30 for the meeting?
6:00 PM.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
Okay, we'll move into ordinances, resolutions, and final actions. Item A, the first, is the letter of intent to issue an IRB for Broadstone Villas II's. I want to ask Jamie McDonald, if you could come to the podium, and we're so glad that you're here, and glad that you're feeling much better, and if you could share, just with the council, a little bit about Phase 1, how it's been, and the plans for Villas II.
Thank you very much, and again, thank you for postponing these items from your last meeting. I fought a tooth. But I'm alive, and I'm well, and I'm glad to be here this evening. Part of the reason I really wanted to attend is I want to thank the City of Bel Air for assisting us with Broadstone Villas I. It has been received by the community very, very well. It's actually, I've been doing this business now 17 years, and it's all in the affordable housing development realm, and this is the first one that we had every unit leased before they were finished. So I think that goes to show you that this type of housing was greatly needed in your area. What I typically don't do, but I want to share just a little, of course, those were 48 units, all two bedrooms and three bedrooms, split evenly. But I want to kind of list some of the occupations of the residents there by name, and I'll just list a few, to let you know what kinds of jobs or employment falls into this type of housing. We've got a few tenants or residents that are from the Wichita Public School District. We've got some from Vision Place, Vision Lab, Alley Financial. We've got a few residents that actually are employed by some local churches in the area. Wesley Medical Center is listed as an occupation of one of the residents. Cox Communication, Aviation Businesses, Kroger Grocery Stores, Dylan's Grocery Stores, FedEx has a few units there, and the state of Kansas. You know what, I kind of hope to bring into perspective what types of occupations, you know. The others that I did not mention, probably all fall into the hospitality side of the world, whether it be servers, or retail workers, or something like that. And those, like I said, those units filled up so fast, and I had our girls recheck the numbers for me in our management side, because I always like to know what kind of waiting lists we have. And I've never had one like this, it's over 300 names as of Friday. Now, what that tells us is, A, the housing's needed, B, I believe there's pictures of the development behind us, and I believe it's a very well-attractive community, there's no difference in looking at this than some of the true market rate developments throughout the metro, I don't believe. So I know that you guys have had a real great year as far as attracting new businesses since I was here a couple of years ago, and I know there's aspirations for some retail and other types of businesses to come on out to your city itself, and I think we all know in the development world that rooftops brings though. So I'm very excited to seek your support again for a second phase. We've already entered into a land contract with the city quite some time ago for the second phase, we kind of laid this out in hopes that the development would be received as this, so it's already been zoned, the four acres there just behind the current development. We're looking at doing 60 units this time, a little bit bigger, we're actually going to go three stories, and out of those 60 units, we're going to do some true market rate units in there, which we have found there is a need for that. Part of the reason we're also very excited about this round, of course, I'll be, we'll be applying in February for the federal tax credits again to help construct it. The state likes to see the city actively involved, and I'm proud to say that, though I don't understand all the mechanisms, but Ty and our financial guys were the first in the state to utilize this type of bond for development, for housing. So I was on the first conference call with the group, which included a lot of other attorneys that dealt with the bond councils, and I actually remember and chuckled, because one of them goes, "We've never done this before, how can we figure this out?" Well, we did. Now, don't ask me the mechanisms, they could tell that, Ty could probably educate you on that. But the state likes to see the city's support, and what a better way to support a development like this within your community is through these bonds. So we're looking at 60 units, we're going to do an even split again of twos and threes. The rent on those will be a little bit different than the first phase. We are targeting again from the 30s to the 60% AMIs for the income qualifying units, which targets, on the 40% side for one person, they can't make over the 17.5 mark roughly. And I'll go to a family of four to the 60, that puts it right about the $40,000. So that's kind of the income guidelines that fall into the affordable units. Of course, then, the market rate units, they'll have to go through the same qualifying parts of our lease, as far as background checks, you know, like we do on all of our units, but of course, their income won't come into play, other than we typically like to show an income of three times the rent, is kind of our magic number there. It'll be basically the same design, it should seamlessly flow with the first phase, and our rents will range for a two-bedroom unit from $438 to $590 in the affordable units, to around $700 for the market. Three-bedroom units will go from $499 to $695 in the affordable realm, and we're projecting an $800 market rate unit for the three bedrooms. I believe I've got another site up there, the gentleman could kindly put the site plan up for me there. It just kind of shows, the first phase should be a little bit hazy, but the second phase we had planned, where the detention basin is there to the west of the main entrance, there'll be another entry point there that'll have a building that, there it is, buildings kind of will line up there, north and south, and then east and west, and that was the plot there. So be more than happy, I know there's a few new faces on the board since I've been here last, but be happy to answer any questions, kind of share any information, you have questions about the tax credit side of the world, or if not, I appreciate your support in this development, we're anxiously waiting to make application. I might say that applications, I believe I mentioned, go in in February, they typically award sometime in May, so if we're successful in achieving and obtaining an allocation of the tax credits, we'd sure hope to break ground before the end of the year, so sometime fall to late fall.
Wonderful, well, thank you so much for being here. I know this actually was on our agenda at our last meeting, we had some discussion, and we're, yeah, I think, I speak for the council, I say a lot of us are pretty excited, and we have 300 people waiting to move to Bel Air. That's exciting, and I know we'll take action on it tonight. Wanted to wait for you to be here to tell us all about it.
Thank you very much.
Councilmembers have questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have a comment. When I saw the name Zimmerman, and I saw the name of the Broadstone Villas II, I didn't make the connection between the two. So because of that, I spoke with Mr. Lasher, our city manager, and asked him where this group was located, and once I got there, I realized I had been there to the open house, of course. It's a beautiful, it's a beautiful place, and I'm very proud of the fact that they have chosen Bel Air to build these structures, and to have a waiting list of 305 people is, you know, just remarkable. So I'm happy, I will be happy to vote for this project this evening.
Councilman Becker?
Yes, I have a question too, and it's probably, may seem like a silly question to you, but I've been curious, how do people know to apply? Because I know you had quite a number of people that had already signed up for the first units.
Yes, we typically, and we have four other communities, including Broadstone in the Wichita Metro area, so we have a presence here already, which we have a regional manager that covers us also. We typically start our pre-marketing, there's a sign that'll go up in construction will start, and it will state what it is, and that it's affordable housing, and it's through the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, and then we also add our management company's phone number to it. Typically, we go ahead and have one signed with a local number, and then that, of course, rings to our corporate office, and that way we can explain. Our other properties in the area do a good job also, you know, we have 112 properties across 13 states, so we have 112 communities, we have a little over 7,500 total housing units. And to let you know how this housing is needed, we're running at 95% to 98% occupancy in our entire portfolio. So there are those individuals in the area that know of this program, first of all. Second of all, there'll be some little publicity pushes done to let you know there are new apartments coming to the area, and that'll generate some interest.
Well, thank you very much, I'm very glad to have you here, and that you're providing these lovely places to live for people.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Any other councilmembers?
Just thank you.
Thank you for being here, I'm glad you're feeling better.
Thank you.
Let's echo that again, okay. So the first items, A, B, and C, do all flow together, but require a different action. The first one, you know, of course, in order for the developer to receive these tax credits, these types of properties are often located in a neighborhood revitalization program, which allows for tax abatements that show the city's also interested in affordable housing. So since we have no NRP, staff work with Zimmerman Properties to go through this process and award the same type of tax payments allowed. That was the first time both Zimmerman and the Kansas Housing Corporation used such a method, which resulted, I think, in a very positive outcome. Letter of intent has the same language and abatement as contained in Phase 1, which we just heard all about. The cost-benefit analysis performed by Wichita State identified a 1.5% cost ratio for Bel Air. Remember, we went through all that with those cost ratios, and not just Bel Air, but for the county, the state, and for 259. So therefore, I would certainly recommend that we approve this letter of intent so that they can move forward with Phase 2.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the letter of intent to issue IRBs and provide other incentives for development of Broadstone Villas II, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. That was a tie. Jamie, who's it going to? I'm going to put it up.
She can have it.
I'll just give it to Diane, she's married.
Oh, that's how you are.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, okay. And second one, then, item B, this is the resolution, it's part of their application to the Resource Corporation, a resolution of support is requested from the city where the apartments are to be located. This shows community support. Broadstone Villas, as you know, has been very, very, very successful, and I'm excited to see their commitment with that. And with the other one, I would recommend that we approve this resolution as well, so they can complete their tax credit application right away.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we approve a resolution of support for a tax credit application to be filed with the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation for the development of Broadstone Villas II, an affordable housing community by Zimmerman Properties LLC, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Whatever.
Give it to Ben.
Okay, I wrote aye. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, sign. Okay, and item C, this is the resolution determining the advisability of issuing the IRB. They'd like to construct, as you know, Villa II, which is going to be north of the current one. Phase 2 is going to be an $8 million project for 60 apartments, as with all IRBs, Bel Air is not responsible for this project, I want to point that out, or the related debt payments, which again, I think that's important for everybody to know, and would recommend that we approve this as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution of the governing body of the City of Bel Air, Kansas, determining the advisability of issuing residential rental facility revenue bonds for the purpose of financing the acquisition and construction of an affordable housing residential rental facility to be located in said city, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Man, what a...
I didn't say it that time.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And again, thank you for being here, and we look forward to seeing the new construction start pretty quickly, I would imagine, yeah. Wonderful, thank you. Okay, we're going to move right along into our next item, which this is a consideration of proposal by Professor Jay Price with Wichita State, to complete and publish in order 250 copies of the history of Bel Air. And would go ahead and invite the professor to come forward if you'd like, and want to point out, this book was never published, but we have the manuscript. Council talked about that in the summer a little bit, suggested seeing the manuscript updated and a book published. So yeah, like I said, I'd like to invite Dr. Price to come to the podium, review the proposal, and kind of what your plan is going forward.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mayor, Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to talk to you this evening. The project began a number of years ago now, when the city came to me about doing a history of the community. In fact, in preparation for tonight, I was looking over some of the papers done, and they have dates such as 2006 on them and so forth. Well, the result was a rough draft of a manuscript, and I tell the story of Bel Air from the late 19th century, and our connections to people like David Payne, and Toller, and elsewhere, up through the creation of the Improvement District and Corporation, and then up to the present, which at the time was 2006. For a variety of reasons, the manuscript did not get published, and I wanted to do something with the story, I mean, it's a story worth telling. I'm thrilled to see Betty on the council now, she really helped with that initial project, and was very instrumental in that. There's an awful lot of research on cities, but there aren't always a lot of histories of communities like Bel Air, and there was a really fascinating story, I felt, about how a community came together and formed. So when the opportunity came to complete the project, bring closure to it, I was delighted, and I jumped at the opportunity. And talking with Ty a little bit about the story, I mean, the story really does expand beyond 2006, so much has happened in the past decade, and a story about leadership, a story about making tough decisions and moving forward, about taking a situation and really developing this part of Sedgwick County. With that, this wasn't simply a matter of taking an existing manuscript, tweaking it, dusting off a few things, and submitting it. There will have to be some revisions, in part because the story needs to be continued, and so that's where this proposal comes in. I want to work primarily with the publisher, Mennonite Press, I've been impressed with their work, they do a number of local and community history works here, they're delightful people with which to function. Essentially, what would happen is I would submit them a series of files that will be, and working on formatting and things of that nature, as well as... and working on formatting and things of that nature, as well as photographs, covers, and so forth. They put it together, they send it on back. I talked with Dwight, both up at Mennonite just last week, as a matter of fact, on some things, and essentially, it takes a couple of months. So it's always good to reverse engineer it by about three months as to when you want it done. So I'm, would guesstimate that a release date in early October in time for some of your community events and certainly the holidays coming up, not too far afterwards, would be reasonable, which back scheduling things puts it in the middle of summer. So I would be working on updating the manuscript, adding an additional chapter, getting more photographs, talking to more individuals, and so forth, in the spring and early summer, getting things to Mennonite. And then I talked to Dwight about how the sequence from their perspective. Once it's up there, it's pretty straightforward, they're, they're, it's pretty easy to, to work with. Now, Mennonite is, does more what's called print on demand, in that, in the sense that they're, we've bought about 250 copies. If you want to order more, they're delighted to help you with that, we're not locked into that amount. But that's a starter, so the quote that you see here, and it will be basically the eight and a half by 11, a standard book size process, but we want to make sure that it's got a good quality paper, and we definitely want a color, I mean, you're looking at the maps and the photographs, gotta have color. And it's, so it's a celebration of the community, but also, I would hope that this would be a story to help guide other people talking about local governance, as a case study of some lessons learned. I was even talking to a colleague of mine with the Kansas Leadership Center about some ideas about having to incorporate some decision-making frameworks that they use that really highlight what happened here. And so you have a real great opportunity, I think, to talk about that. Those are my overviews, what questions do you have?
I want to say, thank you so much for coming. I want to say, I think I have a few questions up here, I just, a couple of things to reiterate. So the $5,000 cost, that includes not just the writing and editing, but the publishing as well of the books, that's everything, okay?
That is correct, yes.
And then certainly, you know, last month, Bel Air celebrated its 35th birthday.
Right.
A few of us up here, yeah, we're here, you talk about those tough decisions, there certainly were some major tough decisions that I know, when I started on the council that we were a part of. With the previous manuscript, and I've heard from some of the past mayors that they, that they thought there were a few things that might be, that need changed a little bit. So when you say, I, you know, updating, is that, is that something where you would be willing to meet with each one of them, and let them kind of have their say as to what they think happens well with the, with the previous manuscript? So it's not, that manuscript's not locked in, and then you're just adding? Were able to go back and change, correct if needed?
Absolutely.
Okay.
This would be, is a start of a relationship. I will be coming back to see you, I want to chat with you more, I definitely want the feedback. This is in many ways, you, this is your book, this is not my book. I'm helping you tell your story. And so it is absolutely a conversation. I have a particular lens, and I highlight certain things and others, but absolutely, I want to talk to individuals to make sure that it's framed right, that I'm telling the story that the community wants to have told, in many ways.
So is it safe to say the current manuscript never really made it to the finish line?
That is correct.
So there were still room for some changes and revisions and corrections, it just never, the project never got to that point?
The, the, the current manuscript is a first draft.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear, because it seemed like there were some concerns about some of the things in that first draft, thank you.
Community histories are always a conversation, that, for me, is a normal part of a process like this. And when I do something like this, my next phase is reaching out to make sure, I, I know what I mean, but to make sure that it's, what's really needing to be said, is that's the important thing.
Gotcha, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Are you willing to, how many copies of the manuscript do you have? Just one?
Electronic and rough versions printed out, yes.
I've spoken with several of the past mayors, and I believe they do want to speak with you.
Okay.
But in order for them to speak intelligently with you, I think they have to have read the manuscript prior to meeting with you.
Of course.
So that if they have any issues that they wish to discuss with you, then they have the facts in front of them.
Of course.
That can, that can be arranged without any difficulty?
That is very easy to have, to have happen. I, I made sure that all electronic copies were saved, and many, you know, I have them ready, and I can certainly email.
Don't say, our '06 format's still working today?
Yeah, 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 three half, no, no, absolutely, no, there, everything is saved in, in current format, I'm happy to do hard copy and email, and by all means, people are welcome to email and call and text.
Many of the people on this council, of course, have not read the manuscript, and we were not part of the events that occurred in the past. I would be happy to read the manuscript if it were available for me to do so.
Lovely.
Yeah.
That's a wonderful way to start the, the process, and have this as a conversation. I'm really helping you help this conversation about the history, yes.
Well, thank you very much.
I'm patient, and like I said, we had some concerns, you've addressed some of those, and hearing that it's a first draft, I think, settled a lot of those concerns that I had been hearing, that, you know, the price, again, that includes the printing as well, was another major concern, but, you know, yeah, before councils tonight, we just kind of wanted to see if this is something that council wanted to move forward with. Councilmember Webb?
Yes, I have another question. I also have been approached by some of, shall I say, elders of the city, with these same concerns, not ever having seen a draft, or kind of not knowing what happened even back at that point. But the first thing when I read this was, we sort of are in another era now, and I'm wondering about even the disposition or the need for 250 paper copies. Is that something that's set in stone, or could it be more of a living document that is much more electronic?
I think there are a couple of ways we could think about that. I know that the Mennonite Press can certainly print more, I mean, that's usually when you talk to Mennonite Press, that's where the conversation is. How they're moving into the ebook version, that's a great question, that's something I could certainly bring to Duattin and see what his interest is. I haven't heard Mennonite talk much about that, but that doesn't mean that they haven't done it, might just not mean I'm, I've talked with them about that particular circumstance, but I could certainly ask that question.
Well, the history of Bel Air will not stop when I leave the council, or Ramona leaves the council, or Peggy. It is going to be ongoing. This is our 35th anniversary now, so, you know, I would like to see that kind of thing, where it's very easy to do an update, you know, and then I always like, if, if the 250 copies is something, I'd like to see us have some way to make this a moneymaker out of it. You know, maybe gifts to outgoing council members of the history, as it stands now, but, you know, to actually have it as some type of a moneymaker, you know, for the city.
Yeah, I would absolutely think that we could recoup some of that cost through sales.
I was thinking that too, sell them through...
And that's just, again, I'm thinking back to '06, I was joking, you know, but yeah, Windows 95, or whatever, you know, in '06, that it was written on, and does that work today? And do you ever imagine we'd be talking about having it for Nooks and Kindles, you know? So, yeah, to have it where it is for the, the future, so that, yeah, we have something for the 35th, and then we have something again for the 45th, or, or so on, so.
A, a book like this should be a living document. Again, it's the starting point of a conversation, it is not the ending point of a conversation. It is nice to have hard copy, I find in my own experience, to hand out, people will read it electronically, but they like to have it physically. And a number of the local and community history books that I've done, people treat them like yearbooks, they, they sign their name next to their photo, and there's a physical tangible piece that people do enjoy about that, but I, but the idea of, of an ebook version is a conversation worth having. I, I thank you for, for bringing that up. You also bring about how much has changed. One principle in terms of how we think of history, is how we think of the past tells us more about where we are in the present than about the past. Again, writing the book in 2006 would have had a very different tone and story than it does now, that is normal. And so it speaks not just to where we were in 1980, 1955, but also to where we are in 2015, as opposed to 2006, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I served on that committee under Mayor Withrow, and the intentions at that time was, we were gonna write the history, and Mr. Price kept us late many times, because he'd say, ooh, Betty, this is not what I intended for you to get, and I had to go back. We did talk to all of the mayors, and got their stories, and his class helped us a lot. At the time we started this history book, our intentions were, they would sell the books for around $20, because everybody wanted to give their grandkids history of Bel Air. And then we were gonna go on from there and do Book Two, but it came, became a problem because we ran out of money. And so we had to just, we just got the manuscript, and Mr. Price did the pictures and et cetera. So I'd like to see this book finished with up to date to 2015, sell it to the public if they want to buy it, and with, if you sold the books for $20 apiece, the first time, we're not gonna make any commission on it. But you'll recoup your $5,000, the $20 a book. Plus, you could, like you said, you can reorder, and then you can still go back and bring up a his, another history committee, and go forward from 2015 to future years, and say Phase Two, or Book Two, whatever you want to call it. But everybody...
The rest of the story.
Yeah, the rest of the story. They were all very excited, I mean, even Mr. Eaton worked on that committee. And several of the people that worked on that committee are now moved out of Bel Air or gone, I think there's not too many of us left, but...
I don't know that I'd want to wait too much longer to...
Yeah. So I really think it's a good idea to, to go ahead with this, and I'm all for it, because a lot of people doesn't know, don't know what all happened in the early years of Bel Air.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I might, I, I agree with Betty, because it was right when I came on council with the Mayor Withrow, and they all, we decided to do it, and like she said, it's correct, we couldn't finish it because there was no money. And so I would hate to lose this, I mean, you worked so hard, and we all, you know, there were many times that, that they, the committees met, like you said, and put this together, and $20 is very reasonable. I, I don't, I mean, I love, like Diane, Diane said, to sell it, but not even just to, for a moneymaker, just so people would have a copy. And if you go much more than that, then it becomes a lot, you know, people say, oh, 20 for a book.
They don't want to buy it for their, they want to buy it for their grandkids.
Yeah, so, but 250 is a good amount, and, just, I'm excited we can finish it up, because, you know, I remember starting it.
Revise and finish, yeah.
Right, 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 the first draft, and I, I'm just saying, I remember we started this.
Oh, yes.
So I'm glad that we're at this point.
It was fun.
It was.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I guess my only concern here, and I'll, it's sort of the same as Mr. McDonald brought to the forefront, I hate just kind of voting, yay, yay, it's, it's a go, because everyone I talk to wants it to go, and I do too, but I really wish we could put in there some way that the manuscript could be sent to all of us on the council, I think all of us would like to see that, we're voting on some kind of an office.
Well, I think Mr. Price, or Dr. Price has said that he would, of course, would furnish that to all of us.
Yes, absolutely, I can do that.
And certainly to the previous mayors, and people that were involved in the first draft that you had talked to.
A lot of them have read it.
Yeah.
And, and how long do, do you think that would take?
In what regard, I'm sorry?
How long would that take you to provide that to those of us?
It could be emailed by the end of the week, if you, that soon, yeah. Fortunately, electronic files are easy to send. That, that in itself is not a problem.
Okay.
You can probably put it in a zip file, send it over with the pictures and everything.
Precisely, yes.
Perfect.
I could send it over to Ty, and it could be disseminated right at that point, or I can do it individually, however you prefer.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I guess my question is, what...
And Mr. Mayor, everyone here is in favor of this history, there, there isn't anyone here, but I'm going to suggest that rather than vote, and, and a, a dollar amount, and a number of, certain number of copies, I'm going to suggest that we table this, this particular motion, and Dr. Price knows that we're going to approve eventually, but after discussion with the mayors, and having us read it, and so on and so forth. Would you be agreeable to that, Dr. Price?
If that's your preference, I can certainly, I just get the information, and then you make an informed decision that way, but I, whichever version you prefer, I, that's fine.
I'm for that.
Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry.
I would make a motion to...
Well, okay.
Table the proposal with Dr. Jay Price and the Mennonite Press to complete and print 250 copies of the history of Bel Air.
Second?
Okay, before I call for the votes, there's been a motion and second table, were there other comments?
Well, my concern is, I think it would be hard for him to want to go forward with not knowing that this is going to be paid for by us. I would, if it was me, I'm just putting myself into his shoes, I wouldn't want to be working on something not knowing that I was going to have that check, you know, there's no formal action on that. And the second thing is, I, I think I need to ask this to, to Dr. Price, but I'm assuming that is their minimum order. I know my son-in-law writes books, and at publishers, they have a set thing, and so I'm thinking, that's why you put this in here.
Right.
Right, that's your minimum, and that's what they said.
250 is usually what they're standing for.
They're not gonna do, absolutely, they're not gonna do 100. I mean, it's not worth their time, so...
Right.
So if we move forward with tabling, you don't know that, that the 250 or 5,000 is going to change much by this time, yeah.
That's usually your minimum.
Yeah, it's usually a minimum. At this point, I don't think it would change that much, but in terms of, the, the amount, yeah, usually it's a 250 amount.
Right.
Because they're usually thinking in higher amounts, that's, that's part of it.
Absolutely. And, and with that, that's why I'm gonna say, I'm, I appreciate what you said, Councilmember McDonald, but I'm not in favor of that, because I just want him to be able to start moving forward, knowing that he's going to have the money there.
Thank you.
May I say?
Please.
I, I know Dr. Price, and I have the utmost confidence in his integrity in working with us, and from what he said here tonight, I think he's going to be very open to looking at what was done before, and allowing everybody to have input on that, and then adding to move on, move forward from what was done before. So I personally would feel very comfortable with this.
Thank you very much.
So right now, there's a motion and a second to table this, are you wanting to continue with that motion?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm going to call for the vote on to table this. All in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, it looks like the motion failed two to three. Is there further action, or another motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to accept the proposal with Jay Price and Mennonite Press to complete and print 250 copies of the history of Bel Air.
Second?
I'm writing down the notes here. All right, we have first and second to accept the motion of 250 copies at the, in the 5,000. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so, is that just one nay?
Just one, exactly.
Nay.
Nay, two, okay, I'm sorry, okay.
Still hearing.
So, motion passes three to two, so, I'll afford to work with you on that, okay, thank you.
Well, thank you. And towards that, I am going to head over, and I will send an email version of the files in just a few minutes.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Nice hat.
Yeah, I like that, we're a proud...
It's inappropriate. Thank you.
Okay, Item E, we'll move along to the farm leases, and that's, as you know, Bel Air owns roughly 1,000 acres of farmland that is farmed, and that's, that's used by renters, so we get some revenue for the city, basically for crops, hay, and pasture. It's an important function that the land is maintained, and the city receives roughly $36,000 in revenue annually for this 1,000 acres. And the city receives roughly $36,000 in revenue annually for this 1,000 acres. So I would certainly, since it doesn't look like we have a big business knocking down on the door to build something there at this very moment, would recommend the council approve the farm leases with Bohannon, Roth, Ence and Petrie, who I think have been very good partners.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to echo what you just said. I think it's wonderful that we're able to work with these great people that are working the land. I think that's really important. And so I'd like to move to approve the farm leases with Petrie, Ence, Bohannon and Roth's and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
Second, okay, got two of them there. And I'm saying, this is also good with the environment, too, when they're doing, irrigating and everything, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have a question.
Please.
Being it's 36,715,500 that we receive for this farm lease, my mind went blank. I don't, where do we put this money when we receive it?
Goes towards the budget, which goes towards payments on the land.
Goes in general.
Yeah, goes into the land, land fund.
Just so the city realizes what we're doing with this 37,000. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next is addendum to a real estate contract. Recently, we approved a real estate contract with Sher Nevas and Krishnamurti.
Krishnamurti.
Krishnamurti, at the, we did that at the October 6 meeting to purchase lots, one and two of Block A in the Commerce Park. They've been working with staff on the building design as well as the IRB for the project. Sher Nevas is leaving the country for a month and the agreement is set to expire at the end of this year. Like I said, and we talked about this and approved it back in October. So like to extend the closing until January 15. So just pushing it back a couple weeks so that when he returns. I do want to point out that survey has been completed. Plans and, and plans are being designed as we speak. So they can be ready to close on that next month. So I would recommend that we accept and approve this addendum just until January 15.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McDonald?
I make a motion to approve the first addendum to real estate purchase agreement with Sher Nevas, Krishnamurti and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
First and second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hi. Next, I talked about, and we do have our next CCUA meeting Thursday at 4 o'clock. Just a sidebar announcement right there. But since the CCUA is issuing debt to make some major improvements, I'm going to, I think we can call them major improvements, to the plant, some long overdue improvements. A third supplemental agreement is required to authorize these improvements. Majority of this added debt service costs are going to be supported by the energy savings that we've, I think, discussed for what over a year and a half now and really gone through all of that. But it's going to be saved through this energy audit. However, Bel Air is going to be responsible for roughly 39,000 above the cost savings. And should point out, you know, Park City also is sharing some of this. Saff Hills, the sewer fund is going to cover these added costs, which I was very excited to, to learn that, to know that, again, that we're not looking at a raise in water rates and able to absorb. I think we've kind of been planning on this with some prudent budgeting over the last couple of years. So would certainly recommend the council approve the ordinance allowing for CCUA plant upgrades to move forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance supplementing numbers 365, 417, 5457 and 517 of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, authorizing the execution of a fourth supplemental water supply and wastewater service agreement with Chisholm Creek Utility Authority and authorize, oh, excuse me, and authorizing all other necessary documents and actions with respect thereto and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
First and second, are there any questions or comments? It is a roll call vote. Councilmember Becker?
Yay.
Councilmember McDonald?
Aye.
Councilmember Martine?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
And it passes five, nothing. So this has been, like you said, for the CCUA meetings, I can, Councilmember O'Donnell, I know Councilmember Martine has attended a number of those meetings. And, yeah, we've talked about this energy audit and just the fact that we can really rein in a lot of the, I think it's, again, this is another good thing for the environment, for the water supply to maintain and moving forward with that. So appreciate that. Next is wastewater operating expense agreement. This, the original agreement between Bel Air and Park City, when we created the CCUA way back in 2002, which I'm sure is in the history book, called for a true-up based on actual amount of sewage that each city sent to the CCUA. The exact true-up formula was never created, meaning that each city is paying 50% of the cost. Since Bel Air sends less than that to the CCUA, we felt the true-up should be based on actual usage. Bel Air and Park City attorneys created the wastewater operating expense agreement and is now before council for improvement. This is something that I and staff have been working on for several months. I think it's a positive for Bel Air. And would recommend that we approve this agreement. I've enjoyed working with the Park City Mayor, Ray Mann, and really, you know, finding there's, you know, we all want the best for our cities and our citizens and moving forward with that. So would certainly recommend that council approve this tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I make a motion to approve the wastewater operation, operating expense agreement with Park City and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
First and second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And it passes. Next, item I, which came before to let the community know we had our first land bank meeting at 6:45 this, not this morning, this evening before our, I kind of felt like that. But, you know, this is where we created this land bank to hold vacant land that exempts the city from paying property taxes and gives us a lot more flexibility in special assessments. Security First has completed the title work to move the ownership to the land bank. The land bank's very, very, very similar to the Bel Air, the PBC, which holds title of the industrial park land. So the governing body, again, remind everybody, is also land bank board. Like I said, we met here this evening. And I feel this is a positive move and something that I certainly support, the transfer of this ownership.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McDonald?
I make a motion to approve the transfer of identified real estate owned by the city of Bel Air Land Bank in accordance with KSA 12-5906 and authorize the mayor to sign the associated deeds or deeds.
Second?
Everyone seconded that one.
Except me.
You going to Betty on the end, okay?
I didn't.
Whatever.
Diane can have it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, wanted to, discussion of future issues. Remind everybody that we have a workshop at 6:00 PM on Thursday. And we have our CCUA meeting at 4 o'clock. Before that...
4:30.
4:30, pardon me, thank you, thank you for that. Is there a need for an executive session? Any other details need to come up before council this evening? Not accepted motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, I would like, I, I would just like a five-minute executive. Not sure who I need to have in. Do we need our attorney in?
Is it for elected personnel or?
It's for personnel.
Yeah, I think we just have elected officials in here. Can we do that?
Yeah, for personnel, you cannot need them in charge.
Okay, I just need five minutes, just with the council.
You sure you don't need 10?
Sure, I'll take 10. I don't care, what do you guys want?
Well, time everybody gets through talking.
Okay, 10 minutes.
Five goes fast. Mayor's got a time clock, he has to...
I do, thank you, Mrs. Martine.
7:15, okay.
Is, is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second, and it is 7:59. We are in executive session. As soon as everybody votes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now we're in executive session at 8 o'clock straight up.